...to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all present? I'd just like to say something about one of our dear friends that's been... she's been... she passed away today sometime. Her name is Barbara Burton. Barbara's been involved with the village probably about the 20 years that I've been involved with the village, and those that know her, she passed away today. Barbara was always active in the community. She was one of our beloved members of the community, and she'll be sadly missed. Barbara had... she didn't have any money for burial expenses or anything. And if there's anyone that would be willing, and all of us, whoever could chip in to help, it's at the Mitka Fund P.O. Box 410, Monticello, New York, 12701.
Can you spell the Mitka?
Mitzvah?
Mitzvah.
Okay.
That's close.
And if anyone... if anyone needs the information or anything, they can contact me or come to the office, and we can try to donate some money for Barbara. And she'll be missed by the residents and coming to the village board.
How did she pass away, Gordon?
I have no idea. No idea. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Mayor, you have an add-on?
Okay, with an add-on?
The employee handbook for discussion and vote.
Okay, with the discussion with the handbook?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we can...
I have an add to the agenda to discuss the manager position. That's only an add to the agenda.
Okay.
Added to the agenda?
Yeah.
So we had... Did you add on it? So you added on the handbook, right?
Yes, that's the only add-on I...
Okay. Okay. Approval of minutes from November 19th, 2013.
We need all for the agenda.
A motion and a roll call?
Oh, for the handbook?
For the agenda.
Okay, for the agenda. Okay, roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? And Rochelle?
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna read a statement, and this is from my statement by Mayor Gordon Jenkins, 12-3, 2013. "In a highly unusual act, the Selva County District Attorney's Office released many hours of videotapes of my recent incarceration while charges against me are pending. There as much can be said about the video and associated events. This is not the time for full discussion of the issues raised. Legal proceedings are pending. However, I do want to state the following. Number one, I continue to believe that if any police officer observed me in the state of what he or she believed was inebriated, the officer had a responsibility to approach me or any person in a similar situation at the scene of the traffic accident and offer me a ride to whatever... wherever I was going. Assuming I was inebriated, such a response would have protected public safety. This never happened." Number two, "Like those employed by other jurisdictions, our police officers must obey the Constitution and before questioning a detainee, afford his or her right to confer with legal counsel. In this case, the video marked clear that I asked repeatedly for legal counsel and was not afforded that right. I was not promptly arraigned and was held in what I regard as an inhumane manner. I implore our police officers to ensure compliance with Miranda rights and to treat all arrestees with basic... with basic respect." Despite my... number three, "Despite my evident frustration with what I believe was selective and targeted police conduct against me and the violation of my rights, I agree with those who have condemned my choice of language. I do believe that some of the response I have received as mayor has been discriminatory and that our village accomplishes has been obscured by focused on my activities or alleged activities. At the same time, I understand that letting anger get the better of me was a poor choice, and I apologize to those who are understandable offenders with my choices of words and the manner in which I express my outrage and anger. I also recognize that the selected segments of police video portray me as if I'm possessed of a deep-seated racial animosity toward one of those involved in this incident. I am not and have spent my career working closely with people of all races and backgrounds. While I remain upset by how I was treated, I apologize for my profanity and my use of racial epithets. I understand that many cannot or do not discriminate between the use of such words by a person deeply upset and provoked, as I was, and the use of those words without provocation. I spent more than three years serving our country, being honorable discharge in the Army, and another 29 years as a correction officer in our great state. As noted, I have worked with my fine members of law enforcement and respect police officers who properly perform their duties and applaud their commitment to our community. I also agree that name-calling is not the most constructive way to resolve serious issues of intolerance or bigotry. Ensuring that all people are treated with dignity, especially those cuffed to walls and powerless to stand up for themselves. I remain committed to serving our community and to continue our progress, both in respecting the right of others and helping to all actualize their potential. I appreciate everyone for their support, and I apologize for the wording, and I'd like to move on. Thank you very much." Can I have approval of minutes from the November 19th, 2000 village board meetings? Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Managers, mayor report. Last meeting... last meeting, I had... I went over probably about 10 projects in the village. The gaming has continued, and the gaming is on in the village of Monticello. I... I'm not gonna go... I don't wanna go and be redundant about all of the projects that are facing this village, but there's a lot of great... there's a lot of great things happening in this village. There's a lot of growth. There's jobs coming in this village, and I don't like to boast and brag about what's coming here, but I... but believe me, there's a lot of growth coming to this village, and the people in this community will see the growth and they will see jobs. My commitment to the village residents is to have people in this community working and treated with opportunity for all for jobs. We need work in this community, and I can't say it enough. I have so many people come and ask me for work, and that's what we need. So again, it's... this village is expanding. We have probably about 10 projects that are going forward, and every one of the projects, and Mr. Snowden, the building inspector, can verify it, that every job that came in front of us in this village, everyone guaranteed at least 10, five jobs. There's abundance of jobs in the village. That's the village residents. So we're moving forward, and I... and I'd like to say thank you for the patience for waiting, because when I came in, I said, "We will get jobs and we will get growth," and my four years, it's starting to bloom like a... I see it like a seed that's blossoming, and people can pick the good fruit, and we all can eat off that good fruit. So again, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to number seven. Resolution amending the standard workday and reporting resolutions passed October 23rd, 2012, and adding the standard workday for the previous village manager, John Legrecchi, at 15.06 per day, month in accordance to the reported and recorded information over a three-month period. Can I have a resolution... a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, second?
The retirements.
This is retirements.
Okay.
Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Eight, resolution amended the standard workday and reporting resolutions passed October 23rd, 2012, and adding the standard workday for Judge Josephine Finn at 17.63 days per month in accordance reported... recorded information over a three-month period. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
And Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the standard workday and reporting resolutions for village clerk Janine Gandy and village treasurer, Lilo, as participating in the timekeeping system and working eight hours a day. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second? Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
And Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of four flanges from Cayman Energy Soul Source Provider for the sewer department in the amount of $1,100. Appropriation G. 8130-421. Current account balance is $7,341.40. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
And Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of belts from National Filter Media for the sewer department in the amount of $2,202. Appropriation 8130.421. Current balance is $6,241.40. Can I have a motion?
Make a...
Second?
Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
And Rochelle? Yes.
We're gonna have public comment.
Add-on to the...
Oh, okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to pass the handbook?
I have the handbook.
Okay.
We have to sit down together and one day maybe set up a workshop, because I have few things there that has to be really changing.
Because the work... because the... we had this in the package, and this is human resources that we're paying for this, and the date, it's a... this has been there... we had this quite a while, and we...
No, we just got a last meeting.
It's gonna be another month of expenses on this if we... if we don't pass this.
But we have a last meeting, but we need to...
I think the board should go forward with this, because it's just gonna cost us another month. It's been looked at by myself and Reverend Matthews and Rochelle and...
I do get a reason, but it's a lot of changes, and it can affect... and it can be a lawsuit regarding to... a lot of things there.
Can I have... can I have a roll call on it?
Not only that.
Or motion on it?
This is too soon to really... It's not even been put in the agenda. It's not been put in public heading. Nothing that need a public heading for the employees.
Does this need a publication?
Yes, it need a public heading. Because that's the employees...
It's an employee's name.
Employees is not being announced.
The clerk had asked for you to give your input.
Employers not be needing to...
To give your input on... in it. I gave my input to Janina, and I went over with her, so she did ask for it. So I make a motion to go ahead and pass it.
Second? Okay, roll call, Carmen?
No.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more? Addendas?
Yes, I have an addenda to... I have a... you know, the people has to understand that the village has the manager for me government. We all sitting here, and we can just be temporary manager. Because of the law, when we... when we run for office, we know all of us that it's manager for me government, and the village is different, and the village is liberty. So when the mayor was appointed as the manager, it's only temporary, and it's been going too long. A lot of things has been happened. It's impossible to talk to a lot of mixer employers, including... a lot of employer has to come to the manager. The manager report to the board. So I really make a motion to release Mr. Gordon Jenkins for the position of village manager, because we need to do something to move forward in this community. I have a second.
No, that's...
I have a second.
Roll call. Roll call, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
No.
No.
No. Public comments? Public comments, please.
There's a reason why.
Something like that to you.
There's a reason why.
You are disgrace. Take your hat off. You take your hat off. Don't please. This is a meeting, actually. He shows some respect. Okay, ma'am. Order.
There's a reason why you're saying that now, which you don't even give. Underneath all of that talk is the reason for the police asking for more money. There is so much they want. We have $12 million in this village. Nine million go to the police. Three million for... Three million.
Public comments, nothing.
There's always a reason why Carmen comes up with a no. She never goes along with the board. Everything is no. She has an underlying reason for everything, and if it isn't from her, it's from that idiot over there.
Excuse me, I'm gonna respond to that. No, excuse me. You know, best, you don't know nothing about the budget. The budget of the police is 2.1 million. If you wanna know, that way you learn them. That way you learn.
Okay. It's just public comment.
Since I've been here, since I've been in Monticello for about 11 years, I've watched a lot of the kids when I first came into this place, and I wanna say, "I commend you for the job that you've done." You understand? When I came up there, these kids were so depressed. It's a shame. It's a shame how depressed some of these kids are in this area. It was a shame. And then when it was brought up to the Board of Education, and they was talking about all these kids, they was saying there was nothing wrong in the school system, and nothing personal, but Carmen, you sat on that board, and you sat there right there.
I never see it in the...
You sat on that board, because I was at the meeting. When y'all went to the meeting, y'all said there was nothing wrong in the school.
I was not on the board.
And then it came out, and then...
You're wrong. Carmen's not on the school board. You was never on the school board. You're wrong.
And then I said she was at the meeting. I said she was...
You said she was on the board. You're giving misinformation.
She was at the meeting. She was at the meeting.
You never served on that board.
When they found out... That's the bottom line. The bottom line, what I'm trying to say, you did the best that you can. They say it's an old saying, "If people don't come after you, you're not doing your job."
Thank you.
And I'm gonna leave you at that.
Regarding the youth of the village, has anything been done for either? That's my concern right now. They need a house. They need a home. We spoke about it two weeks ago. I got it when I spoke. When I said, "It was time was of the essence." They no longer have a home. Has anything been done?
It's public... Charlie, it's public comment. After the meeting, I'll answer your question. I'm not gonna go back and forth, because it's just public comment. Not to go... because if I answer your question, I have to answer everyone's question, and it's not fair. So, all right, please. Anyone else? Sir?
Gordon, it is immoral and unethical of you to expect special treatment from the police. But expectation gives you a right to speak when you are alleged to be intoxicated, and when you appear to be intoxicated. I do not concur. We deserve equal treatment. Your grandiosity knows no bounds. You are not better than the rest of the community. Ma'am?
Well, you are probably are.
My name is Diana Crivello. This should not be about color. It should not be about races. It's who's doing what, and who is right and who's wrong. I'm Spanish-like Carmen. I have supported the mayor. I have gotten a lot of heat for that. Trust me, I have. You supported him in that. If she's right, I'll go on her side. If she's wrong, I... It's really not about color. It's who's doing what, and what's right is right. That's how I personally feel.
Yeah, but some people are racist, some are not.
So, no, it's right. There's a lot of races is going on, but I truly believe for myself, what's right is right, what's wrong is wrong. It's not about, you know, if the mayor was white, he was caught drunk, and he was wrong, he was wrong. If he's black, and he was caught drunk, he was right. You know, this is how I feel personally. Thank you.
Yeah, but wrong, we put the tape out there. That was drunk.
All right, sir.
That was the disgrace of the village.
Yes, it was.
I got one thing to say. You know, I've been... I've been in this community for quite a while, okay? I've come through trials and tribulations. I've been down, I've been up, okay? I remember when I was down, trying to get back on my feet, you and Gordon came and talked to the whole community at the recovery center. You was on him like this. You was backing him up and everything. I would just... I would just like to know what the hell happened now that you wanna go on the outside, give the fucking media film, just show all that shit on fucking YouTube about him? What the hell happened? Excuse my language. What happened? One minute, you're up underneath him like this, the next minute, you're all against him. I voted for you. I voted for you.
It's just public comment.
Josephine Finn released the media. No, excuse me. You should go to the court and tell them why they released the tape. The court released the tape. No, I know it authority to release it. Josephine Finn released the tape to the media. That's what you should know.
You are ridiculous. You are ridiculous.
Carmen, you are a disgrace.
You are ridiculous.
This town.
You need to be voted on.
And what you did was wrong. You should have never broadcasted him on YouTube.
At all.
You're quick to slander his name, but what about your own son, who was caught in a steroid bust by the state police?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Judges are coming out today.
Are you not crying?
Judges are coming out. Report that. Put that on YouTube.
You can't allow this. If you don't want them to talk about you like that, you cannot allow them to talk about Carmen like that. Unfair. Unfair.
Kids have bodies to...
It doesn't matter if you're innocent. I've been taught.
You need to be taught.
What happened to equal treatment under law? All right. Anyone else? Anyone else for public comment?
He's done nothing but harm for this community.
Otherwise, I'm gonna have to cancel the meeting. Order, please.
Calm down.
Calm down.
Tell the chief of police, do your job. Who's the one that order?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yes, I did, Janet.
As you know, Barbara Burton just passed away.
I was talking to them. They don't wanna start talking to them.
Okay, okay. That's okay.
I'd just like to say, Barbara Burton just passed away. She was a resident of the community.
You said that already.
She meant... he said that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna have it.
I do. I just wanna say, for what it's worth, you keep your comments to yourself. When you can start attending meetings and learn protocols, then you can speak. You, as the mayor, standing here in this position, holding this meeting, this whole meeting is out of order, totally. First off, not to try and make any more... things more difficult for you as they are, you put yourself in that position, and to have these people come in here and support of and carry this meeting to the point that it has gone, it's not showing much respect for the youth in this area. It's killing our youth. It's showing the youth that... I'm talking, okay? It's showing the youth. So tell your supporter to be quiet for a second. So for you to sit here and allow this meeting to go to the extent that it's going, you're not making a... setting a good example for the youth in this area, because it's letting them to know they can do whatever, they can say whatever, they can disrespect the police in their manner, in any manner they so choose. Black, white has nothing to do with what took place in the beginning. So we're way off... we're way off course. Many of us have come and started supporting the meetings since you got in trouble. Many of us have been here for an existence of time. So for some to come here tonight and last meeting and think that they know what's really going on behind closed doors, some of us that have sat here from time to time, as Carmen stated, we don't know the budget. We don't know the ins and the outs of what actually goes on behind closed doors and executive meetings. So for us to just blatantly boast our opinion about what we don't know, it's wrong. You need to set an example and realize you're not hurting any of us grownups in here. You're hurting the young ones that are coming up and need to go through here. Whether it's the police that's wrong, I have brothers that's been in and out of jail. Yes, many years ago, they said the police beat them up. We... my parents were there. There's a lot on both sides. There's a lot on every side. So right now, you're defeating... you're defeating your community and the state that you're standing here tonight. It's not gonna help. What the mayor did is out there. So what are you gonna do? Stand on it or move forward? He made that bed. So we need to do what we need to do for our community and bring it back together. And yes, I'm standing here, I have a right to talk, because my son's life was taken in this community, not by a white man, but by his own with a black man.
Hi, people. I've been here since 1947, which is more than most of you have. And I've watched a lot of governments come and go here, and I've watched the developments, at least what I've been able to read in the paper and hear on the radio or whatever, of this government that you have over here. I know you started out wanting to do a lot of good things, but the corruption that's happened in the past of your members that are not here right now, and your own anger and whatever else is going on here that's not good, is now across the whole world. Somebody put it on Bill O'Reilly, and the world is looking at us now, not just here to make a government that works. And your government, the way it is now, is not working, Gordon. Even though you started out on the right foot, you'll see things go from bad to worse. I think we have to have a new government over here, okay?
Exactly.
I'd just like to say, okay, you got to understand that people have an emotional feeling towards this. We all... we all know that, okay? Black people have been subject to so many different things, okay? And when you have a person that you feel is trying to disrupt things just because they figure they have the power, you know what I'm saying? I said, "That causes problems." See, it's not always the individual that we're looking at. Right now, it's Gordon. But it's like... like this woman said here. She said that it's affecting all of us, but it's affecting all of us in basic... basic feelings, okay? We all resort back to racism, okay? And we know for a fact that racism still exists. We can look at the panel and see the person that we suspect that's doing all this sits on the end, when the rest of them sit in the middle and on the other end. So, you know, we all know that. So in order to get to some truth here, we got to move on, okay? Grab up your feelings, move on, let's stand together, okay? This man, he didn't come to this world being perfect. I don't think nobody in here is perfect. If, if, if any man is in here with no sin, then stand up. Anybody in here with no sin? Stand up. See, that's the thing I'm trying, we trying to say here. Don't, this is not the man that you, you reflecting on. You can give it all to him. The man was in a situation, he was, he was trying to help and somebody, uh, played some little game and called, and said, "Oh, we're gonna get him." When the man came to go help somebody, it was two car, if you wanna see my phone, it was two cars flipped over on Broadway onto the sidewalk. Now, nobody said nothing about that, but they wanna say, "Oh, we caught him drinking" and all this kinda nonsense. What, what do that tell you? That doesn't tell you that he has some good in him, that tells you that this, this man ain't doing nothing. If the man is getting jobs here, if he's trying to make something happen, why don't we rally behind that? Because I don't know anybody, anybody ain't got a hundred thousand dollars in the bank. I don't think so. Okay? So I'm just saying, people, you need to get together.
Anyone else? You finished yet?
Yeah.
All right, sir.
You know, I was arrested once for drunken driving and they put me in a cell, in a holding bin, after they talked to me for an hour and they put me in the holding cell, right? Well, I would like to know, how come they kept you for ten, twelve hours? I would like to know that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to.
I, I, I can't go back and forth.
No, somebody oughta give me the answer to that one. If I, if I got caught, they left me there for, talking to them for half an hour or an hour, they put me in the, on the, on the cell, let me go, let me go the next day, but this guy was holed up for eight hours, I mean, on the video, on the DVD, that was all for four hours.
Anyone else for public comment? Ma'am? No heat? Ma'am? All right.
I know a lot of you. I know a lot of these faces. I'm not condoning what the mayor did. I think the wheels of justice will come to their conclusion.
Thank you.
I do believe that the manner in which it was dealt with by the board, one member in particular, was outrageous and inappropriate. I think to put eight hours or nine hours of this stuff on YouTube, I can't imagine the reason for it other than some kind of vendetta.
Ooh, thank you, Jesus.
I don't understand it. I think that the average person here who has been arrested, many of us have been, I don't see how anyone could have gotten those tapes that quickly without undue influence.
By court order. Thank you.
By putting it on YouTube. You have.
How about the next day? Come on.
You have put horrible attention to this town. I'm not saying sweep it under the rug, but I wanna know what was the actual motive behind trying to destroy and shame this man? Again, I am not condoning what the mayor did. He's gonna get his just desserts, but there's another underlying thing that's going on in this town and it's been going on for a long time. And I would like to beg everybody here to please reconsider your positions. If you cannot deal with your office in a fair manner, putting the town first, not your own agenda, then please get up and leave.
Right now, right now, right now.
You know what?